To order for ZBIA. Roll call, please.
Mo LaRosa.
Here.
Andrew Ivanowitz.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner, here. Charlie Master Birdy.
Here.
Kelly Davis.
Here.
Robert Quaznicki.
Here.
Kathy Plopper, Rich Stroney.
Here.
All right, as I see Mr. Quaznicki with the flag, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Don't have a, an agenda in front of me. Rich, can I get the agenda on the screen?
Mo, before, I have a question. Is it possible for you to just call in and then just mute your, and so you can see us, but we can hear you by your phone?
I don't know. I guess I could try that. Why? Are you really having trouble hearing me?
Yeah, you're very, you're very soft spoken. I'm just wondering if it's something we might want to try. It might be too late for it right now, so let's.
Maybe, maybe we'll try it after the end of the meeting before we all log off.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I didn't know. I, I tried to summarize all of the town attorney opinions that you received this evening. I didn't know if you would like me to try to give a quick summary. But if not, it's up to you. If you, otherwise, if you want to just move ahead, that's your prerogative.
I, I actually called in today and as you know, because I, I really feel the board needed time to go through this stuff together. And we weren't given, given any opportunity to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to table ZBIA 2020-1204 to our February meeting and schedule a meeting in person with our town attorney and ZBIA commissioners to discuss and review the automotive approval and non-conforming use legal opinions that we received over the, on Friday, January 22nd.
Second.
May, may, may I say something, Mr. Chairman? I mean, you've got the town attorney's opinion. It's pretty straightforward. And I, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion and it's been seconded. Can we vote on it?
We have, we have the time to, we're not running up against the clock, correct?
You're holding up an applicant.
Mr. Chairman, are we going into discussion?
Do we have discussion on the motion?
Who seconded it, please?
Andrew did.
Thank you.
Can we hear discussion?
May I be heard, Mr. Chairman, on this motion?
Negative. Mary Ann, you wanted discussion?
Yes. Do we need to vote on the thing first or do the discussion first?
Discussion first.
The ZBIA commissioners have received the legal notices that came out on automotive approval and non-conforming uses, and they both were sent to us on Friday, January 22nd, the afternoon. Due to the length of the documents, and this is my comment only, and I have only been able to read these in the last 48 hours or so, I have questions and I need clarification. I'm assuming that the planning staff is expecting the attorney's opinion to be used for ZBIA 2020-1204. Since it took four weeks to produce the town attorney's opinions and he's an expert, I would expect the commissioners would be given ample time to review and get clarification on the documents as we are volunteer commissioners. That is the reason for my request.
Any other discussion?
I, I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. You know, it, it's a lot to expect everybody to get through all of that. There's complicated, complicated stuff there, certainly for the, the lay commissioners, and I, I think it would be important to just take our time and make sure everybody understands it.
Um, I'm in agreement that we need to have time to, to read it and understand it. Um, I mean, I understand more today than I did with, before we asked the question. But I feel the board as a whole should be able to sit down together and go through it. And make sure that we're all on the same page. I mean, I, I would have loved to have had an executive session tonight, but I wasn't notified of the emails in time to, to be able to do that. So I apologize for that, but with that said, any other discussion? Roll call?
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Ivanowitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
We'll postpone this until the February meeting.
May I be heard now, Mr. Chairman?
Um.
This is a public hearing.
Public hearing hasn't been opened.
I guess that, that, you're right. It's, it's corrected. Sorry about that.
Unfortunately, Carl, no, you can speak to Lori, if you'd like. But the public, I haven't opened a public hearing. So I, I'm not sure. I think it would be unprecedented for me to let you speak. What do you think, Lori? I, I, I'm not, I don't want to do anything wrong.
Well, you know, I, I don't see any reason that you couldn't move forward. I could give you a quick summary of, of what the, all of those pages meant, because it, it boils down to some very simple aspects.
Unfortunately, a couple of the board members felt we needed to postpone it, and as you see, they, they, we took a vote and the, the board was unanimous on postponing it.
Mr. Chairman, would there be a way to, I understand you've, you've had your vote. Would there be a way so that we didn't have to wait another four weeks?
Mr. Chairman, we need to have a meeting with the town attorney, and I would suggest that that meeting take place the week of February 8th.
Can we pull that off, Lori?
I, I do not know the town attorney's schedule. I have no idea. I mean, all we could do is ask.
And it, and the thing is, he could come back with some dates, even the first week of February, but I strongly advise that this commission sit in a room with the town attorney, and we can do it in the infield room and spread out without, with COVID needs, and we go through these documents, because not only did we save one, we received three.
The short answer, Carl, is I don't know yet.
I, 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 yeah.
Well, whatever you could do, Mr. Chairman, would be helpful, obviously.
We'll let you know.
He's incurring expenses, so, all right, I'll talk to Lori about it.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say anything, please? I'm the applicant, Mosheronin.
We have not opened a public hearing.
No.
Okay. I just want to put a humane thing over the entire picture. I know you guys legal, legal, legal. I just want to put my position concerning my financing.
You'll be able to do that as soon as we open a public hearing. All right. All right.
By the time I will be, the next meeting, I'll probably be in default on everything I worked for in that location. Loans, bills, taxes.
Sir, I understand that, but I, I don't control the whole board. The board voted to postpone it, and we have to do that. So we have to continue moving on. Item five, legal notice.
ZBIA 2021-0112, 19 Winter Way, variance application to section 410 of the infield zoning regulations to allow a seven-foot side yard where 25 feet are required, only to allow a two-story garage addition to the existing home of Bernard and Christine Gomay, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, owners and applicants, map 82, lot 76, R33 zone.
Yeah, are the applicants here?
We are.
Yes.
Okay. And you want to go ahead with your description of your project?
Well, in our existing two-car garage, we're adding square living space. We're a family of eight, and we need more space, so we're going to expand and add a two-car garage on the east side of our home, which will come over seven feet into our side yard line. So we have to request the variance. We have, we have less frontage than most, with only 75-foot frontage. So it's not normally a lot in that regard. So that, and we're also.
The topography of our land. If you see our land slopes on the opposite side of the house, so building on the east side of the house is the best option.
Questions of the board?
Just to confirm to the applicants, your, your driveway is on that same side, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But what are you doing with the garage? Are you going to take the garage that's existing now and completely make it into a house?
No, into extra living space on the front.
But what does that mean? Are we talking about the bonus room? I'm assuming that's upstairs. Are we talking about the, the bays of the garage that are there now?
The garage that's there now will turn into a larger family room on that side of the house. So we're going to be opening the family room on the backside of the house through to the front by making the garage extra living.
You're not making it bedrooms. You're making it a bonus, your additional family room.
It's going to be, it's, yes, it's going to be a larger family room.
There's already space above the garage, the bonus room.
But what is the, what is the hardship?
Do you want to know the hardship? Are you asking us what the hardship is to?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm, excuse me for a moment. Mr. Chairman, you did not read what a variance consists of.
Sorry. A variance is granted when such a grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land different from other parcels and where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardship cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting a variance.
Is the question that you're asking us what the hardship is in regard to our property? I, I need some clarification. I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. If you're asking us what the, the hardship is in regard to our property, we live on a non-conforming lot in the way that we have a triangle-shaped lot with on a cul-de-sac. So as my husband mentioned, the frontage of our lot is about 75 feet. And the shape and the topography of our lot, our house is not squarely built, squarely centered on our lot, so in order for us to add that garage, we would be going over the garage on the east side of our house. So I guess in regard to that definition of the hardship, it would be the shape of our lot, it would be the topography of our lot.
Can you explain the tape that you put on the property?
So the tape that's on the property, there's one, the green tape that's pointing where the proposed garage is built.
I'm sorry, you brought, I can't understand what you said. Say it again.
The green tape would be, is the proposed garage. You can see it's built off of the garage and it is pegged where the new garage would be placed on the land.
And the red tape represents the side yard.
Is where the, where the side yard should end, where if you were 10 feet from your neighbors, it's where the pink tape was?
It's a 25-foot side yard, so the, the red tape represents the side yard, which is 25 feet from this, from the boundary of your neighbors.
Right, so where the red tape is, gives you the 10 feet that you need that's normal in a garage requirement for us to have a side yard setback is where the red tape, but your garage is going to the length of the green tape.
Correct.
And, and what is that buffer between you and your neighbor?
From the, from the side yard or for what, from where the end of the tape would be?
No, let's just from, on the side of your, when I walked on your property, you have cut grass and then there's a buffer. There's a mound, a b, a berm, it's full of trees, kind of like a, a buffer to buffer you from your neighbor. What is that?
And we have three stakes, one at the curb.
I saw that.
One at the front of that, and one inside the buffer to represent the property line, and that was 25 foot from the side yard.
And just to, also that, that piece of land where it's the hill with the, the kind of the path, that was the natural land that was left, that was part of the lot when we had the house built, that we just never took that.
Is that your property or your neighbor's?
Part of it is ours and part of it is theirs. We did have a state to where our property line is.
It also looked like the, that you had the garage going on an angle. It wasn't coming straight out.
We did.
Again, because of the cul-de-sac and the, and the reduced frontage, we were trying to conform to have a straight driveway versus currently where it's angled, and as people are backing out, it's, it's, presents a challenge.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Could, could you guys tell us why you can't use the west side? It, it seems like you'd be a lot better and need less of a variance.
If you could look at the picture of the house from the front, the slope of the land on the west side of the house, we actually have a walkout basement on that side. So on that side, you're talking three stories, so, um, it, so the slope of the land goes down on the, on the west side of the house.
So.
But you wouldn't build in addition to that side of the house? I mean, you could build an addition on that side of the house, but you don't want to because it's not configured to where your family room is. I'm assuming there's bedrooms there or something.
The, that west side is the, is the basement at the ground level, so to your point, yes, we want to build off of our family room and create living space on, on the east side of the house.
Fels?
Just to confirm, this is your house, correct?
It is.
It is.
Okay. Just to make sure I have it right for you.
Thank you.
So I didn't, I didn't measure or anything, but on the, from the, where your marker is to the, the hill where the stake is, how far is that?
To, uh, I'm sorry, could you, the first marker you're referencing is where?
From the, where your plan, where the corner of your garage is going to be.
Yes.
To the marker towards your neighbor's house.
To the, to the, to the corner of where the proposed garage will be?
Correct.
Okay.
To the, the berm where the, the first property marker is.
Yep.
How far is that?
It would be, if, if the side yard is 25 feet through the property line to the berm, or, um, to the end of where we own, it would be 18 feet, proposed 18 feet, because we would come over that side yard by seven feet at that corner.
Okay. Lori, how, how, what's the distance required in between property lines here?
Excuse me, sorry. I believe it's 25 feet side yard. And this is, this is a triangular-shaped lot, which is very unusual. It's hard to get everything up front.
The only reason I ask is we're used to dealing with the, with 15 feet in between.
Oh, that, that could be, but this is a 25-foot setback.
All right, any other discussions, questions rather?
Not that this is great, but couldn't you put a two-car garage in the back corner on the west side? I don't know what side of that is. In your backyard?
On the east side of the house?
East side. If you're just looking for a garage, I guess what it would do is you'd have a curb cut problem and you'd have a problem with the telephone pole.
Correct. She's saying on the west side.
Oh, on the west side.
All right. Is there anybody, any other questions? Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor or against the application? Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor or against the application?
Before you close the hearing, I would like Lori to explain the town attorney's opinion. Unless that's supposed to happen under discussion.
Do that under discussion.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience which would speak in favor or against the application? Would the applicant like to add anything?
Um, just to note that we also submitted two letters of support for our proposed plans, and one is from our neighbor on the side of our house that it would directly affect, as well as a letter from an additional, to make sure that those are noted.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Charlie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Andrew. Discussion. Mary Ann, now would be the time to ask your question to Lori.
Again, because our, we got our material so late, and we haven't been able to talk to the town attorney himself, I, I think there needs to be some discussion here about this giving certain latitude, and I'm also confused on how many feet are supposed to be on which, on that side of the property to give them seven feet. Normally it'll tell us. So how many feet is it supposed to be, Lori? Is it 10 feet or 25 feet that they need to be from their neighbor?
Well, five yards setback, most properties is 25 feet.
So for every property in that neighborhood, it's 25 feet.
That's my understanding, yes. So what I can tell you is, and, and we've discussed this a ways back, and I believe that you actually got the setback variance memo from the town attorney a couple of weeks ago. So what you can do, instead of just giving a variance by moving the setback line, you can just grant the variance for the specific structure that they're requesting and dedicate that exact number, whatever it's, whether it's seven feet or a 10-foot or whatever variance, and, and just make it very specific to the application at hand, and that way you're not actually moving the property line or the setback line, you're, you're only making an exception for that one item for that one request.
I understand that's what you're saying, but when we start, when a bunch of us started here on the board 12 years ago, and we took classes, they told us something totally different. And I only go by what classes the town paid me to go take. So that, that's how I, I run everything is through the classes, the zoning board classes that I've taken. So I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I understand that you're saying the lawyer's saying we could do this and this, but all the classes we've taken say we can't do it that way.
But your attorney, your counsel is telling you that it is okay to do that.
And again, this is the same reason I have with the last town attorney thing. This was put in our packet, and I, and I appreciate Lori that you asked him for it, but I don't remember where we asked him for it, so I was surprised when I found it. Okay, and it was dated December 28th, which I guess attorney, uh, information, if you want us to be on board and you can learn from it or understand it, why didn't you just send it to us when you got it? No. It's dated. It was dated December or something.
It's not just when we got, when we received it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We, we sent the memo to you when we received it, which was weeks ago.
I didn't. I, I'm.
So you, you recently got two town attorney's opinions. That was Friday. This one regarding the variance and, and making it specific to the structure, and you received weeks ago.
Okay, again. Did, okay, well, someone else tell me, did you receive this weeks ago? Because it was in the packet that supposedly went out by email last Friday, 15th, I think. I didn't get it. Our packets weren't delivered to our houses. Are you saying, Lori, that you sent the legal opinion in advance of the packet?
I believe so, yes.
Did anyone get it?
No.
I did not receive a legal opinion except for what was in the packet.
Okay. I know, I, I apologize then. I thought we, we sent it out as soon as we got it.
So here we are again with another legal opinion that we don't have time to digest and talk to him about it.
But you have a legal opinion. You have staff who are educated in this. And I mean, I'm just trying to move things forward here.
Yep.
Friendly.
We, it's not like we're not trying to be friendly, Lori. We're trying to not make sure that we understand what you seem to be driving us towards. And that if we have a town attorney's opinion, then we should have heard from the town attorney or had some discussion about it, which would have been very helpful if we had put it on the agenda before we started all our meetings tonight.
Good point. May I suggest a solution? That we table these two February 8th to a special meeting, and hopefully you'll have opportunity to speak with town attorney in the meantime. Because otherwise, we can't schedule this because we have to advertise it separately if you don't set a meeting date tonight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't understand what she said.
I, I, I missed what you said as well, Lori. You said something about February 8th.
What, my, my recommendation is, I'm not, I'm not sure why I'm not being heard either. Um, my recommendation is that you table both of those applications to February 8th. That way, we don't have to. That way we don't have to re-advertise them. And, and hopefully you'll be able to have the opportunity to speak to the town attorney regarding the three different memos that you've received recently.
Lori, you can't talk for the town attorney unless you're sure he's going to meet with us February 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, maybe.
I'm trying to, to, to make this so we, the applicants could be heard again in two weeks. And hopefully in that time, well, if, if, if you, if you don't get your answer by then, well, we could, we'll have to advertise it and go to the next meeting. I'm trying to make, to make mediation here.
All right. I, I don't know, Mary Ann, I don't know if, if it would make a difference to you if you look at the, 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 um, configuration of the property um, with this, this one application. I do, I kind of see both, both ways with it. Um, I don't know if, if we're gonna approve it. I don't know if approving, approving it with the full seven feet. With this one, I, I think it would be easy for us to say, we could approve it with the fact that it's an attached garage to the house. I think it would be easier than saying, okay, it's a shed in the backyard. So I, I think we could be very specific on this. But I do understand what you're, what you're saying and agree with you completely.
Are we seeing there's gonna be 18 feet left over between the neighbor and this garage wall?
Correct. 18 feet between the garage and the property line.
I don't have any, I did not receive my motion paperwork, nor that information. It's not in the documents.
So there's, there's, there's still gonna be almost 40 feet in between the two houses.
How did you come to that?
Because the other neighbor has to have 25 feet as well.
Oh, on his side. Plus they have a large side yard. I went out and looked at the property today. I understand which. That's why I was wondering if the berm was like no man's land or if it belonged to somebody.
So I can see this, I, I mean, I definitely feel we need to sit with the town attorney. Um, I think we might be able to go through with this one without too many issues with talking with the town attorney.
The question at hand is, are we going to do this variance at seven feet from the, like we've been doing it all along?
I believe what the town attorney said, so I'll go with, with, with that for the night, is that we can make it very specific to the fact that it's an attached garage to this structure. So that moving forward, any variance can only be that attached garage to this structure. They can't build backwards, they can't build forward, they can't do anything but that attached garage to the structure. If I'm reading the, the town attorney's report correct.
Jen, do you have any information you want to share?
Um, I, the legal opinion does say that you can make it structure specific. And, uh, and I apologize in my, um, I, I thought it was my understanding that they were asking for a seven foot variance as in it could be 70 feet off the property line. But now I'm rereading the, um, applicant, application form and I see it says seven foot variance, but, um, you're right, I think that they were just asking to approach seven feet, not have a seven foot side yard. So, um, I did send, Mary Ann, it wasn't late, I think, but the, I did send the 19 Winter Way motion sheet. Um, and the information is on the, uh, staff report as well. But, um, the town, the town attorney's report does say that, uh, or the opinion does say that you can make it structure specific. So, um, if you're, if the commission is comfortable moving forward, writing it that way, that would be up to the board, but, um, staff certainly does support that. If that's what you would like to do.
The other discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe if we can make it specific like that, that we probably should vote on it that way.
I agree with Charlie.
I'd like to know how we're supposed to say those, say that. And is this motion accurate that you sent me? It says to allow a seven foot side yard where 25 is required. That's not correct. Shouldn't it be 18 foot side yard?
Correct.
Correct. I think you'd have to change that.
That's gotta be changed.
You would, Mr. Chairman, you would.
Say that again?
For a structure. And, and the dimensions are not there. And do you know the dimensions offhand? I have the computer just died.
I understand what she said.
Don't know. Lori, if you're not speaking with us, could you mute please? Thank you. All right. So is there any other discussion?
I.
I will give my, I will give my two cents. Well, no, go ahead. Did you have something to say, Andrew?
I was just gonna say, I think it makes sense for this site because it, it has a lot of topography challenges and shape challenges.
Okay. I, I would agree with this for a couple of reasons. Because the town attorney said we could be building specific. I think that's the way we're gonna write our decision. If it comes back to us later that it is in fact gonna do the whole side yard, with this particular property, I still wouldn't have an issue. Because there's so much land in between them and the shape of the land causes a little bit of a problem. So I, yeah, I don't think we can really do anything wrong by granting it. You know, it's not like if we come back later and, and they say, no, it has to be the whole side yard. I, I don't think there's gonna be an issue with this property. So with that being said, well, we can write the, our decision being very building specific. And then when we sit with the town attorney, we'll be able to figure it all out. But for now, we'll go.
So tell me, so, so what are we starting to use longitude and latitude? What do we, how do you?
That's, that's right. That's what we need to figure out because if it wasn't attached to the building and it was a shed, I don't know how we were building specific on it. You know, and that's what the, the town attorney is gonna have to, to, um, just to put down to get us to understand. But for this one, we can be specific because it's for a two car garage attached to this house.
Right.
So they can't go any deeper than the two car garages are proposing because they don't have a variance for that, that area behind them.
Hang on, let's ask that question. Can, and again, do we, did we move forward, will we close the public hearing where they can't talk to?
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, so I need, uh, Rich, can you put up the diagram? Can you tell me how deep this garage is?
Yeah, we need the floor print direct dimensions.
Could we state what it was?
Before you go that far, Mary Ann, let's, let's vote on it because you don't know what, what you're gonna write yet. Because if it doesn't pass, you don't have to write all that.
But if the garage is an extra size deep thing, you may have a different, you may not agree.
Okay.
I can't tell. It may be 22 feet. If it's 22 feet, how's the car, how's that, could a garage gonna, I thought a garage was 24 feet deep.
It, it looks to be.
It looks like, Mr. Chairman, that the number shows 43 and a half feet on the front side.
That's the front.
Right, 43 and a half on a front by 22.
It looks to be about 22 deep, yes.
The 43 feet is from the actual house to the property line.
Okay, then how big is the garage?
How deep is it?
That's what I'm trying to figure out because I can't, it's not in the application. It's not written on the.
And it's, and if you're telling me it's gonna be a 22 foot garage, the garage is two feet short.
I think it's larger.
I think, yeah, right. So we may have to wait until we can get the correct dimensions of the garage.
I, I, did you, um, I guess you did close the public hearing?
I didn't think we closed it because I didn't take.
I didn't think we did.
We didn't vote on it, no.
We did not vote on.
I didn't, I didn't take a, the roll call.
Yeah, I, I didn't think you closed.
So it is still open.
So perhaps you could, um, undo that motion and ask the applicants what the actual dimensions are?
Andrew and, Andrew would have to take the second away and Charlie would have to take the first away.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
To the applicant, can we have the side, the dimensions this garage is supposed to be?
The proposed size of the garage is estimated to be 24 by 24. We've had drawings drafted for the space, the living space. But until we were to receive the variant, we haven't had exact drawings. But we used our architect to determine that we would need the seven foot, um, in the front and in the back of the garage. And, and if you, if you can envision, it's, if just the garage part, it, in that square would be 24 by 24. That answers your question.
It should be on our application.
Not on the application.
It's not.
So.
It's not.
May I suggest some wording? Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
So the applicant is seeking a seven foot variance from a 25 foot side yard setback for an attached 24 by 24 garage.
You need to say it so I can write it down.
Okay.
Seven foot setback. Say it again, seven foot.
Seven foot variance.
Right.
From the 25 foot.
Side yard.
Side yard setback.
Yep.
For an attached 24 by 24 garage.
And you're absolutely sure this isn't going any deeper or any wider than that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we could make that a stipulation that it doesn't go any larger, correct?
Well, once we pass it, that's it, that he won't get anything bigger.
Correct, so.
And, and, and just for curiosity, are you adding a bonus from above this garage too?
Um, we haven't determined yet. The, the, the roof line will, um, be the same roof line as our existing base, but we're, we're, we're gonna, um, frame it for space, but we're, we're not sure if we're gonna go that far.
Mary Ann, do you want to clarify that this is a two story structure?
I think we have to put it in there because I think we're leaving ourselves open and I don't want a mistake.
Right.
I thi, I think that would be wise.
I'd like to change the wording just a little bit.
I am more than happy if you say it slowly.
I wanna make sure that we put in that it's for no larger than a 24 by 24 foot structure. No larger than a 24 by 24 foot two story structure.
While meeting that variance request.
Well, that's the beginning part, Rich. A seven foot variance from a 25 foot side yard setback for a two story, no larger than 24 by 24 foot garage. Does that make any sense? Charlie, you seem to be loving it over there.
You got it.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
You didn't do the public hearing part yet.
Thought we were gonna do that with the closing of this. Do I have a motion?
You need to close.
I make a motion to close.
Second.
Made by Charlie, seconded by Andrew. Roll call please.
Mo, Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew O'Vannawitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner. Yes, Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Okay, so it's closed.
All right.
Now you need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'm moving to approve.
I second.
Seconded by Charlie. Any more discussion? More discussion down, huh? Roll call please.
Mo LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew O'Vannawitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Okay, so what we're approving is a seven foot variance with a 25 foot side yard setback for a two story structure garage of 24 by 24 feet.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so you, you folks have your variance. Contact Lori within the next couple of days and she'll help you through your next step.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
All right. We have another legal notice.
Wait a minute. ZBA 2020-0113, 710, 718, Enfield Street. Auto location approval application for a dealers and repairs and used car sales license. Melissa Curry, Kimberly Novak, co-ex, I can't pronounce the word, to the estate of Matthew Purcell, owner's Bar Tool Express, Inc. Applicants, map 29, lot 15, BL zone.
So, uh, for this one, the, uh, application actually is being reviewed first by planning and zoning. They have a few proposed site changes, including striping of the parking lot and, um, changing, uh, of the bay doors on the building, um, and that building is located in a design district. So that is scheduled to be on the planning and zoning agenda for this Thursday and they will be back before you in February.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this be tabled until the February meeting.
I agree, I.
We need.
Can I make a suggestion, Jen?
Okay.
Um, we should have been notified before we opened the public hearing.
Well, we didn't open the public hearing here. She just started talking.
You've already read the legal notice that opens the public hearing.
All right.
So now the clock runs.
There's plenty of time on the clock for this.
No, I, I understand, but I wish that we hadn't started the clock. If we didn't read the legal notice, we wouldn't have started the clock. So, just for the future, thank you. All right, so.
I made a motion.
What's next on the agenda, Rick?
I made a motion.
Oh, that's right, you made a motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Andrew. Roll call? Or do we have a discussion? We shouldn't have any. Roll call.
Do you want to do roll call then discussion or?
No, there's no discussion, right?
Is there any discussion?
No, we're just moving to roll call.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew O'Vannawitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
So take this, uh, hearing is held over to February.
Seven approval of minutes, December 21st, 2020 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Made by Charlie, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. Any discussion? Sending none, roll call please.
Mo LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew O'Vannawitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner is stained. Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
All right, next is correspondent staff reports.
Um, that's all I have for zoning board of appeals applications. Um, we haven't received anything other than what's on this agenda um, for the next meeting. And I know that we're going to work at, updating with the town attorney's office and the board as, uh, as soon as possible, so. for the next meeting, and I know that we're going to work at, up meeting with the town attorney's office and the board as, as soon as possible, so keep you on the loop on that. I don't know if Lori has anything else.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind everybody that we sent out an invite to the Connecticut Bar Land Use Law Biennial Meeting. That is a great overview of all the land use responsibilities, the different boards, commissions. And if any of you want to go, I strongly recommend it, especially for any new members. And if you just need a refresher, it goes over case law statutes. You get a pretty fat book as to what they're all referencing, and I would strongly recommend it if anybody wants to go. It is unfortunately on the Saturday, but it's March sixth, from nine to four-thirty, and of course, it will be virtual. So, we did send out an invite, so please think about attending.
Uh, Lori, I believe I did say yes to that, but would you do a favor, let's send that back out again?
Of course.
Because everyone should attend, so try to clear your calendar, guys. If you've been.
That was, yeah, that was sent from Nicole, I think, Lori?
It was, it came from Nicole, yeah.
On Tuesday, uh, the nineteenth.
Like I said earlier, you know, those of us that have been on the board for ten, twelve years, you know, these are classes that we went to early on. So even for, for people that have been on for a while, it's a great refresher even for me and Mary Ann, and, you know, sometimes we forget some of the things we learned twelve years ago. For some of the guys that haven't been on long, look, it, you, you gotta learn somewhere. I mean, you're not gonna do it without going to some of these classes.
And it also shows you how you're all connected to the different boards and commissions in town, so.
Are there anything else, Lori?
Um, that's all I have for that item.
All right, anything from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like you to please make sure that we start receiving our packets in paper form as required and as requested numerous times before our meeting. I was traveling, and I was looking for my packet, and I was told that it was sent by email. Same issue I had with another board that I'm on, and I'd forgotten. Doesn't mean they didn't send it, just means I didn't get it, and so when I started looking for it, I'm getting closer and closer to my meeting. And we should have received the packet, we got December's packet, and, and I don't understand why we didn't get January's. And I'm asking from this point on, that all of our materials for ZB A come in printed form to my door.
I would agree on that, we, we don't really have, we haven't for a while had a set format that we've used. Some months we get hard copies and emails, other months we just get emails, other months we just get hard copies. We need to be consistent on how we're doing it. And personally, like on, on this, this meeting tonight for Winter Way, I like having that map in front of me. Right now, we're virtual on the computer, so we can't sit here on our computer and be looking at everything else and going through everything, because every time I try to do that, I end up clicking out of the meeting. So it'd be nice to have the paper stuff right there, plus things like the legal opinion from the town attorney. It'd be nice to have the hard copy, because there's things I wanna highlight and ask questions about, or highlight to make sure I'm, I'm reading over and over again to make sure I'm doing it right. So, I think going back to the way we were doing it, which the board never said to get out of that way, is just making sure we have a hard packet fifteen days before our meeting.
I apologize for any confusion on that. I know that, under COVID nineteen, since all this virtual stuff started, we started doing packets all online. And the reason you got December in paper form was just because I had to send you about the, the updated zoning regulations anyway, the document for the updated regs. But I have no issue with going back to paper.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question, just like on that Winter Way application, wouldn't we normally have the dimensions of the, the structures on that application as part of the application?
They, they should have been.
They absolutely should have been.
Shouldn't have made it out of the office, Rich.
Well, we'll, we'll need to, to review them a little bit closer.
There used to be, and I'm sure if you dug somewhere in that office, there used to be a, a plot paper that the applicant would get to draw out their, their, their plan.
Yeah, cuz I know, I know when I had done a shed in my backyard years ago, that was a requirement, that I had to plot out the property, the dimensions of the shed, all that stuff.
Right, and they gave you a piece of paper with a bunch of dots on it, and that was the scale. And you had to plot it out, so that even if you didn't write the dimensions, the paperwork was the scale.
Lori or Jennifer, for our applicants, is it possible, do we have just a checklist that we could provide to them of, these are the things that we need to speed up or simplify your process, so that, again, you, you have it from a staff perspective, but they also have it from an applicant perspective, so they know that here's what we need, and if you're missing this, it's going to, like tonight, their, their process would have been a little quicker and smoother if we just had all those ducks in a row.
Rich.
Yeah.
I appreciate your thought. That application should have been reviewed by our staff, and we have a lot of staff now, and it should have been written the way it should have been written, and the twenty-five and seven feet should have been written on there, so we knew exactly what we were talking about. There's nothing that described the, that it wasn't seven feet, that it was eighteen feet. We're, we're getting confused from, from within our own staff information, and for you new guys, you won't even know what to ask, cuz you didn't know what you were missing.
We, we will be much more diligent in the future, I do apologize for that.
Well, no, and that was my thought about the checklist, of simplifying it for everybody, so that there's no doubt in anyone's mind, and, and when the applicants show up in your office to review this stuff, you know, it's, it's go through this together type of thing. Again, I, I've used it successfully in my own business, just checklists make life a lot easier, you don't have to think nearly as hard for anyone.
Yes. We will also download all of the town attorney reviews, or rather opinions, and send them to you in hard copy.
And you better spend, you better schedule the town attorney for a long, long meeting.
Well, I, I will schedule the attorney for when they're available, and we'll do what we can.
Yes, as soon as, I mean, if he gives us a list of dates, um, and you send them out to us, we can, you know, collaborate as to what date's gonna work best for us.
Use Doodle.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there you go, Doodle.
And then we can pick whatever date the most of us can make, and blah de blah blah.
Would you be willing to set a special meeting for the eighth, so in case you are able to see, um, weird noise, in case you actually do get to meet with the town attorney before then, so the first application could be heard?
Well, I would like to be, before we make that decision, I wanna be sure that our town attorney, Mr. Talbert's gonna be there, and that he's not sending the secondary staff.
Well, I can't guarantee that, that's not my decision, I will ask that, but my point is, is that if, if we, if you are able to meet with them before the eighth, then we could let this, this applicant move forward with his project. I mean, he's already been delayed a month, because you asked for this town attorney to, opinion, which took almost a month to write.
Well.
There was so, I mean, there were so, so many questions, and a lot of them were somewhat redundant, and we tried to, and then they got separated out between the two topics, so they wanted to make sure it was thorough.
And you understand why we need the time to review it.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, I'm just trying to move the applications forward, because if you don't schedule the public hearing tonight, then we're going to have to wait the thirty days, and the applicant is, is, might be suffering financially by the delay.
Let me ask you this, Lori.
We could always cancel it.
Lori, let me ask you this. If we schedule it for the eighth, and then we end, actually end up meeting on the eighth, could we cancel our twenty-second meeting? And.
Oh, only if there's no other applications, and we won't know that for a couple of weeks now.
Mo, what do you think, we're gonna, are we thinking that we might have the town attorney discussion after the eighth?
Thing is, if the town attorney comes to us and says, yes, I can meet with them on the first week of, of February, that we turn around and have a, a meeting on the eighth, do we really need to have a meeting two weeks later, or?
Yes, because it's our normal meeting, and it's in the fifteen-day period of when people can file.
Right. If you don't have any new applications, or, but you've already scheduled.
We have one.
You already have one for the next meeting already, because twenty twenty oh one thirteen is postponed until PZC reviews.
Okay.
However, that was not necessary, but, you know, statutorily, but that's okay, doesn't matter, doesn't matter which comes first.
Well, it's up to the board if, uh, do I have any desire of the board to meet on the eighth?
The eighth or before, wha- whatever the town attorney can schedule for, correct?
No, no, she wants to hold.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have no problem with that, Mo. I have no problem with that.
She wants to have a special meeting, so we could potentially have three meetings in February.
Well, to help move that application along, I'm, I'm willing to go along with it. Yeah, I think for the benefit of the applicant.
All right.
I'm good with it. Since this, this isn't his delay issue, it's, it's more on the town side.
All right, Andrew, what are you thinking?
Uh, I just, you know, I, I guess I just don't wanna get everybody's hopes up that it's the eighth, and we can't meet with the attorney, that's my only concern with that. So, I, I don't know, it might be open, maybe we just say the fifteenth, we save a week for the applicant, and give a little bit more time to the attorney, I don't know.
You can always just not hold it on the eighth.
Lori, Lori seems to have a reason she wants it on the eighth, and I'm not following it.
Because that's the earliest week, and, because I figure you probably need a week or two to actually get together with the town attorney, and that's a reasonable date to try to set a special meeting.
A week or two, today's the twenty-fifth. Unless you have direct access to the town attorney for this week, I doubt we'll meet him this week, and so two weeks makes it, only time we have is one, two, three of February.
So Andrew proposed the fifteenth, would that be all right, Lori?
I think you could probably, I.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, if, to, what would be wrong with having, at least trying to do something on the eighth? You had to schedule it tonight, it doesn't work out, I understand it doesn't work out, and perhaps having the town attorney in at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate Attorney Landlea participating, but I'm trying to understand why it has to be on the eighth, is there some statutoryal thing, Lori?
Because I'm trying to get the application approved, or, or, or denied, whichever it is, acted on as soon as possible.
It doesn't have anything to do with filing legal paperwork or anything like that, it's just a convenience.
No, no, if you fi- if you set the meeting tonight, we don't have to re-advertise it.
Thank you.
If you don't set it tonight, then we're going to have to reset, re-advertise it if it's going to be a special meeting.
Mary Ann, it doesn't matter what date we pick, as long as we set the date tonight, they don't have to re-advertise.
Right, and I'm just trying to do it as soon as possible.
And what happens if on the eighth, we still haven't met with the lawyer, and we have to not meet with the applicant, then what, do you have to re-advertise it?
Uh, we will probably have to have it on the, the fault of actual meeting.
Okay, I think the eighth is too soon to get the town attorney to choose February one, two, or three. Those are the only dates that he has available that week.
Do you wanna try for the fifteenth, Mary Ann?
I'm okay if we go later into the week of the eighth.
The fifteenth is President's Day, is Town Hall closed that month?
But we don't go to the Town Hall.
Yeah, we are closed.
Can't have a public hearing at a night when the Town Hall isn't available, or.
Right, well, we're, we're closed, there's no meetings.
How about we do the tenth?
I agree, we do it on the tenth. That gives the town attorney more opportunities to meet with us, and I am not gonna take any more pressure on this than I feel like I am now.
February tenth?
Mr. Chairman?
I can make it, but.
Yes, Rob.
May I make a suggestion that all the commissioners dive into the legal opinion from the attorney prior, as soon as possible, and definitely prior to meeting with the attorney?
Well, everybody should have read them by now.
If you have, get your highlighter out there, Mr. Quaznicki, it's a beauty.
I read it, Rob, just making sure that we dive deeply into it. I, I read it, uh, it seems fairly clear to me, so.
Did you read the non-conformance?
I did.
Okay.
I felt it was very clear, but.
Do we agree to February tenth?
I'm good with February tenth.
All right. Roll call, why don't you just take roll call, so we, we have.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew O'Vannowitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes, Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Bob Quaznicki.
Yes.
Kathy Plapp Erdo, Rich Strode.
Yes.
February tenth, folks, what time?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And are we only having that one item on the tenth?
Yes.
Well, so I have a question. I'm not sure, I don't know. This, this one is coming in front of us for a case seven, where another one is going in front of planning and zoning to be reviewed, or they come to us for a case seven, so how does this one not go to planning and zoning for review?
There aren't changes to the site proposed, like there are on the other one.
There are no conditions.
The other ones in the design district. That's what they're reviewing, is the changes as, as they are reflected in the design district, right?
I believe that's all, I thought it was on a BL zone.
It, so there is an, an Enfield Street, King Street Design Overlay District, so if there are exterior modifications made to buildings in those zones, it's, it, the business local zone does exist, the overlay just kind of is an extra added layer of review for buildings.
I mean, that's the only reason they're going for a planning and zoning, is because of the overlay?
The overlay, yeah, and they're striping parking, I mean, technically, it's not really a site modification to strip parking, but parking was never actually approved for that site, it was only just, you know, historical approval for that site for Porcelllo's was just a sea of parking, and it's, I mean, not striped, just pavement, and cars parked everywhere.
Well, I'm confused, Lori made a comment earlier in this meeting about going in front of us first, or going in front of them first. Question is, it's still a case seven, if we, I, I don't understand, even with the new stuff that I've been reading.
Actually, one of the legal opinions from, I forget which year it was, but it was not the current one, it was an attachment, says that it doesn't matter whether the location approval comes before or after PZC review, if there is a PZC review.
Well, I guess.
I just don't, I just don't understand why there wouldn't be a PZC review.
Because it's not required for location approval.
But if a business opens up in town, planning and zoning always reviews it.
That's true, if it's a new business, but if it's just a transfer of license, then they don't necessarily see it.
But this isn't a transfer of license, there hasn't been a license on this property in years.
And that's some of the stuff I read in this document that you. And that's some of the stuff I read in this document that you sent me forty-eight hours ago.
We got it the exact same time you did, maybe five minutes earlier. I apologize that it came on Friday. That's as soon as the town attorneys could get it to you.
Well, then, we should have taken them off the agenda.
You can't take them off the agenda. You can label it. You can not take it off the agenda.
But if I had received the phone call Friday, we could have added an executive session, correct?
There's nothing to talk about in executive session. That, this isn't attorney-client privilege. You can talk about anything you want on it.
Okay, so maybe we would have added an hour and had the attorney come in or two.
Neither of the attorneys were available this evening, which is why they're not here.
Well, I guess we do the best we can then.
That's what we try to do.
Us too.
Understood.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Nothing here.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.